Order the Doylestown Borough Council meeting for May 19. Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stone.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We have a special presentation tonight. Madam Mayor.
It works. So tonight we are recognizing Elisa Kresmer for serving as our junior councilperson in the last year, and she is leaving us because it is the end of her term, but she is also leaving us to go to the U.S. Air Force Academy, and we are really proud to have served with you. So in recognition of your service, this is a certificate of appreciation, in appreciation for your service as junior councilperson, September 2024 to May 2025, from the Borough Council and your mayor. I have a speaker, but your councilmates would like to give you something a little prettier.
Thank you. We're going to miss you.
You.
So I'll hold this up for you.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Madam Mayor, do you have a report for us tonight?
No, I don't. Just the Memorial Day Parade is upcoming Monday, and if you haven't voted by mail and ballot, please don't forget to vote tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, public safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. First order of business this evening is consideration of ordinance 2025-3, Part 1, creating a handicap parking space at 76 South Hamilton Street, and Part 2, codifying traffic signals at certain intersections. Attached, please find ordinance number 2025-3, which creates a handicap space at 76 South Hamilton Street, and also amends the Borough Code to codify the traffic signals at the following intersections as an unrelated matter of administrative cleanup: North Main Street with Veterans Lane, North Broad Street with Doyle Street, North Broad Street with Veterans Lane, North Broad Street and Atkinson Drive, North Broad Street and Sandy Ridge Drive, North Broad Street and Route 611 northbound, and North Broad Street and Route 611 southbound. Council authorized the advertisement of this ordinance at their meeting on April 21, 2025, and the ordinance has since been properly advertised. The Public Safety Committee recommends that council adopt ordinance number 2025-3. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it may do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Kinney. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, our second business is loading slowly. There we go. Our second business is the authorization to draft and advertise ordinance creating a restricted parking zone on East Ashland Street near Our Lady of Mount Carmel School. In response to concerns regarding school bus access to Our Lady of Mount Carmel School, the Central Bucks Regional Police Department conducted a traffic and parking study of East Ashland Street near the school. As a result, CBRPD is recommending the creation of an approximately 200-foot restricted parking zone opposite the school as depicted on the attached photos. No parking, stopping, or standing would be permitted in the area between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. Borough Council's Public Safety Committee met on May 7, 2025, to consider an ordinance creating the zone. As a result, the committee has recommended the drafting and endorsement of an ordinance creating the restricted parking zone recommended by CBRPD. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by, was it Amy?
Me.
Yeah. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Just to make everyone aware, we did invite all of the affected residents along that portion of Ashland Street to the public safety meeting, gave them an opportunity to raise any concerns or objections, and no one did so. No one either did so at the meeting or by email, so seems to be something the residents can support.
Thank you, John. Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's it for, as a business, I can report that the new Emergency Preparedness and Communications Board will be meeting in the next month, and I'll have a report on that next month. That's it for, and the fire company report is also attached in the packet. That's it for public safety, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Kinney, Public Works and Administration.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your package is a memorandum regarding the contract for the 2025 milling project, which is with A Giuliani Company, which is a co-stars bidder, so no bid award is necessary. However, council should approve the attached contract for the project. The total amount of the contract is $49,620.54. If council wishes to approve the contract, it can do so by motion and I so move.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And also in your packet, Mr. President, is the report from the Department of Public Works. There's nothing in here that's remarkable, and so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kinney. Community and Government Affairs, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Government Affairs did not meet. However, I do have one announcement, and that is that the Doylestown Pride Festival kicks off June 1st with a flag raising at 5:00 p.m. at the Old Courthouse lawn, and also the Borough will be raising the pride flag on that same date here at Borough Hall. And now, this is the part of the job I like the most. It gives me, it's a great privilege to be able to present our annual Youth Recognition Leadership Award program winner, and I'll just call up our winner. I think you might have seen her once before. So I know you seek fame and glory, so, but I have a few comments first. We received a lot of very qualified nominations, and I have to say Eliza was head and shoulders above the other nominees, and they were all great kids, but with your service and your volunteering for kin, membership in National Honor Society, participant in Model Congress, Model UN, and of course, your appointment to the academy, it makes us all very proud to be able to present this award to you. Do you have anything to say?
I'm honored to receive this. Thank you.
Okay. We're honored. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
The only thing we haven't awarded to her tonight is the milling bid. But if she has a pick and shovel.
Sure she could have a job. Yeah. I'd like to get on that.
Zoning and Planning, Ms. Jarrett, what do you have for us tonight?
I do, sorry, my, all the clapping made my, I had to go to sleep. The zoning committee did meet this month, and, oop, sorry. Here we go. Yeah, yeah. So we have the, first I have the HARB recommendations for a subject of appropriateness, for a certificate of appropriateness at its regular monthly meeting. The Borough of Doylestown Historical and Architectural View Board, HARB, recommended the following. There were no sign applications, but the building applications were as follows. 32 Union Street will be the demolition and new construction for a garage. The HARB recommended that the resubmitted application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as submitted with the following changes. Select a different garage door that is not stamped but composite or wood. The metal roof will be midnight green, pine, any bronze shade or copper. An eight-to-10-inch water table will be added around the building, and the street door will be solid with no windows. Next, we have 97 Cottage Street for signing, siding. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as presented and submitted with the following clarifications. The replacement siding will be hardy board in a smooth texture in the color khaki brown. It will be eight-and-a-quarter product width, and the shutters will be repainted black, and those are the existing shutters, and the existing gutters will remain. Last was 130 East Oakland Avenue for windows. The HARB recommended that the application for a certificate of appropriateness be accepted as submitted and presented. The zoning and planning committee recommends that the council approve the applications in accordance with HARB's recommendation, and if council is in agreement, it can do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Popkin, Amy. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
In addition to that, we also have the code enforcement and building inspection reports, which can be found in the packet, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jarrett. Environment and Rec, Ms. Wykoff.
Thank you. I don't have a report tonight, but I just would like to remind everyone that we moved our Pedalpalooza Bike Event from, to June 3rd at five, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Broad Commons Park, and hopefully everyone will join us there. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you very much. Water Utility, Mrs. LeRone, do you have anything tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Water Committee met on the 13th, and we got a monthly operations report from our Director of Water Operations, and nothing there out of the ordinary, so things were looking good. Just three sort of reminders of things we've already talked about, but just to let you know that things are moving along on both the North Main Street water main replacement and the associated grant application that we put in for that, the Spruce Street tank rehab project, and by way of a drought update, we talked about whether to change the restrictions from current mandatory back to voluntary, and we decided to leave them at mandatory. Does that map, or does that go down to the next page? Yeah, there we go. Because the latest report from DEP there, and of course, also my chief meteorologist, Cecily Tyne, also shows the same map, and that's from May 13th. So we're still in what's called, if I could read it, abnormally dry, excuse me, in Central Bucks, so we still haven't caught up with our water well, groundwater levels as to where we should be, so we're leaving the mandatory restrictions on, and I think that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LeRone. Finance and Pension, Ms. Popkin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Pension did not meet this month, but we do have an ordinance that was advertised last month, and we have a consideration for that. In the packet, please find the above-referenced ordinance, increasing the indebtedness of the Borough of Doylestown for the purpose of financing a portion of the PFAS water treatment project. This is approved through funding by the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, Penn Vest, and that's in the amount of $1,043,503. And the debt shall be incurred as non-electorial debt and shall be evidenced by one guaranteed revenue note in fully registered form bearing interest rate at 1.743% during the interest-only period, and then the first five years of the principal amortization, and then 2.179% for the remainder of a 240-month term. The authorization to advertise this ordinance was approved at the April 21, 2025 meeting at Borough Council. The Finance and Pension Committee did not meet in May, however, is recommended that council adopt this ordinance 2025-4, and if council agrees with the recommendation, it can do so by motion and I so move.
Second. We had a second by Mr. LeRone, I think it was. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the second item is the monthly finance report, and that's in the packet. The total amount is $967,423.78, and I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Kinney. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I guess I'm up next. With personnel, we have a couple of items tonight. First off is the authorization to advertise a board vacancy. Environmental Advisory Council member Patrick DiBiase, whose term was up to expire, set to expire in December 31, 2027, has resigned. His resignation creates a vacancy which needs to be filled. If council wishes to authorize the advertisement of the vacancy, it may do so by motion and I so move. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bell. Any questions or comments from any members of the council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have consideration of ordinance number 2025-3, increasing the number of the Emergency Preparedness and Communications Board members. Attached, please find ordinance 2025-3, which increases the size of the Emergency Preparedness and Communications Board from five to seven members. Council authorized the drafting and advertising of this ordinance at their April 21, 2025 meeting, and the ordinance has since been properly advertised. If council wishes to adopt ordinance number 2025-3, it can do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last item I have is the appointment of two members to the Emergency Preparedness and Communications Board members. On March 25, 2025, Personnel Committee met to interview candidates to fill five positions on the newly created Emergency Preparedness and Communications Board. At the conclusion of those interviews and upon discussion, the Personnel Committee recommended to council to draft and advertise an ordinance increasing the size of the board from five members to seven members. The ordinance was prepared and properly advertised and adopted this evening. The Personnel Committee is recommending the following appointments to those two new board positions. First is Pamela Lalande for a one-year term that runs from 4/25 to 12/25, and the second one is Mary Ford with a two-year term that also begins on April 2025 and runs through December of 2026. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it may do so by motion and I so move.
Second.
We have a couple of seconds there, I think, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, okay. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes the Personnel Committee report. Next item is the Professionals Report. Mr. Doherty, do you have anything?
Thank you, I have nothing to report tonight.
Solicitors Report, do you have anything for us?
No report this evening.
Okay. Central Bucks Chief, you have anything?
No report tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. President's Report, I usually don't have one, but I do want to commend Alyssa for all that she's put into this, and I'm wondering, have your parents give you any recommendations on how to survive the first year at the Air Force?
I think they're leaving most of it to my parents.
Well, congratulations and best of luck with that.
Thank you so much.
That concludes the President's Report. Do we have any items of old business?
Mr. President, I just wanted to note that in addition to the parade this weekend, the Doylestown 5K will be on Saturday morning. It's 30 years, 31 years, I think, now, and just that the hanging baskets went out this past month, and as usual, perked up the entire town. Thank you to Public Works for that and everybody that volunteered and discovered Doylestown.
I have another note on the 5K. The committee did ask that they need more volunteers if anyone in their ward has someone interested.
Well, thank you. Any other items of old business? Any items of new business?
Yes, Mr. President, just a quick update on the DART. As you know, the mayor and I sit on the DART committee, and we had a quarterly meeting earlier this, or on Friday, I should say, and so things are looking good with the DART. We're working, they're working on expanding the program into Warmminster, from Warrington into Warmminster, and also there were two, there was an inquiry for two areas in the borough, Maplewood and Old Orchard, for them to look at as possibly adding one or both of those as stops. So they haven't made a final determination on that yet, but if it doesn't raise to the occasion of providing an actual stop there, then the committee thought that we should do more promotion of what's called the Shared Ride Program. That is a thing where residents can call up DART and actually schedule a pickup, an individual pickup, at their home anywhere in the system. So we'll probably, you'll probably be seeing some additional promotional material on that by probably the end of the year, or at least the next quarter. Madam Mayor, did I forget anything on the DART update?
Nope.
Thank you.
Be comprehensive.
Okay, and that's the end of that report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. I don't think we have an executive session tonight.
We do not.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night. Good night and good luck. Good luck.